Public participation. Any at this time? Okay. We'll go right into approval of minutes. Minutes of June 19th, 2017, public session.
Moved to accept.
Moved to accept by Mrs. Cardinal.
Second.
Second by Ms. McElhenney. Any discussion on these? Changes or anything? No? Hearing none, I call for Mr. Frida.
I guess I'm looking for the process when we approve the minutes because the ones posted are still from January. So we can't...I just wonder what happens after we approve these minutes because we can't find them online. I can't find them anywhere. So can somebody tell me what happens?
The link is...still isn't working? Are you putting them in the folder?
I thought the link was going into the folder and it was going out. Okay, I will double check.
I haven't looked for a while. I usually can find them when I click on that folder.
The most recent set of minutes I can find publicly are January 2017.
Okay.
So that's not good.
Nope, I would agree.
So I was particularly looking for the June 19th ones because Angie had that quote in there and I wanted to actually see what the quote was.
Oh.
And I can't read the minutes because they're not online. So I guess I would recommend that we have some kind of process that is a little quicker than the one we have.
We...yeah. The process is clearly broken.
We never get to see the approved minutes after we make corrections unless we go online to find them and you can't unless you were here before January. There's so many people out there who gripe about things that would like to have our minutes as transparent as possible.
That's a good point. We didn't know that the link was not working unless...are you looking at the new...
The public folders.
The two folders, okay.
I'm on our page and I don't...it's just not...
Okay. Thank you. Go back and check those.
Anything else specific to these minutes?
No, just that I was curious about that June 5th quote.
Hearing none, I call for a vote. All those in favor? Minutes of June 19th, 2017, non-public session one.
Oh, sorry, abstaining from that last one. I wasn't here. Sorry.
One abstention on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Give me a second. Hickel, honey, sorry. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Frida. Discussion on these? Any changes? Anything to note? Hearing none, I call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Non-public session two from June 19th.
It's moved to accept.
It's moved by Mrs. Cardinal.
Second.
Second by...sorry, stand, stand, sorry. Second by Mr. Frida. Any discussion on those?
We usually do like student A and student B. The names are mentioned in these minutes, so I don't know if we want to name the names in the students. I mean, it's still...
Right, it wasn't a disciplinary issue.
Right. Yeah, I just don't know what we all want.
And that I don't know.
Just one of those things that I noted.
Yeah, on these particular topics, I would think that it's important to have the first and last name for record of approval for what they're requesting.
Right, I have to agree on that.
I do think, just to look back.
All right, then we'll want to add their first names into them because it was just the first initial.
First initial, last name is probably sufficient to identify.
Okay.
We don't have that many in a given grade level of the same that that's going to be...
So we will be able to find them.
I think we'll be able to figure it out, yeah.
Sorry, that was uncalled for.
Anything else? All those in favor? Aye. Non-public session three from June 19th.
Moved to accept.
Motion to Mrs. Cardinal.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moran.
Page three, it should say Ms. Brady Silva instead of Mr. Ms. Brady Silva? Ms. instead of Mr., yeah.
Of course, this is still the 19th. You weren't...I know you know who, but...
Right.
Anything else? All those in favor? Aye. Non-public session four, June 19th.
Moved to accept.
Moving by Mrs. Cardinal. Second by Ms. McElhenney. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Abstain.
Abstain.
Public session from June 28th.
It's moved.
It's moved by Mrs. Moran.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal. Discussion on these?
I forgot to sign them. I drafted them and I forgot to sign them, so I will make sure to sign them. Um...nope.
Nope. All set?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor? Aye. Non-public session one from June 28th.
The motion is up.
To move by Mrs. Cardinal. Second by Mrs. Moran. Discussion?
Two errors that I already gave to the minute taker was it should be instead of Kinney on page two, I think. It should be McKinney and the 91A should be 91A colon 32.
Were these the ones, Linda, that you had? Not these?
No.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor? Aye. Any minutes from non-public session two, June 28th? Motion by Mrs. Moran. Second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion on these?
I had a question on that. It was actually just wording. This page two under...it says, "Mr. Frida added/recommended the standard severance language." I don't know exactly what it shows.
Is it added slash recommended?
I don't know. I couldn't recall exactly. I just know that it kind of jumped out as a bit garbled.
I think it was I had recommended language and he...
Recommended adding?
Recommended the added recommendation. It gets distinctly awkward.
Anything else?
Recommended adding.
Yes, that's probably...
All set? All those in favor? New business bids.
Okay, so we...the board's request, we solicited a bid, a public bid, for legal services for the district. We'd sent out electronically and through the mail bids to five attorneys, attorney firms in New Hampshire who have done business in working with school districts. We received two responses, one from Soul Leslie Kidder and the other one from Sullaway and Hollis. Both have done business with schools and they listed their references and...
And I will let the board know that in regards to the question that you had asked me back last week, I have not heard back yet and we've done a little bit of phone tag. So I don't have that nailed down to give you an answer. So we may want to wait on this, but it was already...at the point that it went on the agenda, I thought we'd be good and I did not hear today. So I think we might want an answer there before we go here.
I'll make a motion to table.
Motion to table. Second by Mr. Frida. All those in favor? Okay, is it the only bid that was referenced on the agenda?
No, the other was the...
The other is the bid for the fencing project. The fencing project that is pursuant to law and Article Number 11 that was approved by the voters this spring. We went out to public bid. We had an appropriation of $12,000 and Mr. Gordon worked with local companies and they've had opportunities to be able to walk the project, understanding what the project is. They are all able to provide insurance, liability coverage. So we received four responses. First one is GC AAA Fence out of Dover. They're the low bidder at $9,500. The second one is Chasco Incorporated out of Portsmouth for $9,700. The third bid is 125 Fence in Barrington for $10,474. And the high bidder is Central Fence and Deck in Somersworth for $19,897. We know that the specifications are in fact accurate. It's hard for us to say why that bidder becomes the outlier by twice the amount, but we're recommending that GC AAA Fence be awarded the bid for $9,500.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Moran. Second by Mr. Frida. Discussion?
Will we be putting it outside?
Mrs. Cardinal.
What is the perimeter that was walked with the company? Can you describe the perimeter that was walked with the company, with the bidding companies?
It's a little slower each time we meet.
We all...
Yes, I...it was three bidders that before we started the project last year, we had them all come up and they walked property separately. They all came up with measurements within 40 feet of each other. So when we did the specifications, I averaged, took the average of all three bids and came up with the square footage that was closest to all three. Then took the specifications from each one, basically, and combined them all. They were all basically the same, the same chain link fence, steel posts, caps, everything. And like I said, they each came up, hit the perimeter from the back of the playground, from the dumpsters where the fences existing behind the dumpsters were most often. They are going around the perimeter of the grass behind the basketball court, around wooded area, out through the back, along the backside of wooded area that's all grassed in, back around the front and as far as where the wood chips start for the playground, over to the fence again by the dumpsters. There are three swinging gates for access and two double gates so that we can still get them all as a tract as in, in and out when we have to mow.
Okay, so this won't...it won't bud the building at all?
No. No, it's on the opposite side of the driveway out back. The driveway is still...it's basically about 12 feet back from the driveway, I would say, where the wood chips begin for the playground. So it's basically closing the playground and the grassed area behind the playground.
When you say cap, are we going to be putting a safety cover over the top of...
That wasn't included yet.
That wasn't included.
Not the caps, I was talking about with the caps for the posts.
The one that you're recommending going with, the GC AAA Fence, they don't mention using concrete where the other two do. Do we know if they are planning on that?
That was put into the specifications, that the posts had to be in concrete.
In concrete, okay. It just doesn't specify it in there. I don't know if they're going to add that in after.
Just know that in the way the bid specifications have been written, as you look at them on our website, is that we required all of the proposals to be signed by the bidders. So essentially, they're signing off on what they're reading and yes, concrete is important.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Financials. I'm not sure we're doing them. They got on the agenda, but...
Okay, we have not...it was on the...it's typically on the agenda now. We've not finalized the year-end. We've done one payroll so far. There were a few questions that had come up, so opportunity to answer some of those, but other than that, we don't have a financials packet, so...
You had some questions, I know you outlined, did you?
Yeah, so you don't have any answers to the six questions?
Well, so the Guilfoyle piece, I had brought to the board that there was a group of the superintendent's...
So I'm going to cut you for a minute. I think it's important to state the question for the purpose of the minutes and for the purpose of people here and at home.
Right, yes, good point. So one of the responsibilities for school board members is to review manifests before any checks go out for payment against the invoices that come in for payment. And one line item is called John Guilfoyle Public Relations LLC is the payee and the note says annual public relation. So my question was, what is that service?
I...back at the beginning of June, I had spoken with the board that the superintendent's group was looking to do a consortium bid with a public relations firm. We were able to join that consortium as a district for a much reduced cost with what we'd be able to get on that. It was under the $5,000 and what it gives, what it gives our district is pretty much 24/7 access to a public relations firm that if we...not only to be able to put out the good things that we're doing, they're going to help us with the website, they're going to look at some of the pieces that we're doing, promoting what we're doing, but also giving us kind of some of that troubleshooting if we need it as well. And so there's...by joining the consortium contract, we had an opportunity to have a much...have access to a firm that we would never have been able to touch in price point. And so they have committed to working with the Southeasters Group. They are assigning a point person to this region to cover just these districts so that we have access to the entire firm if something comes up and we need assistance or to be able to make sure that we're getting coverage for those things that are happening that I'm frankly short-staffed to do otherwise, but I have somebody there that that's there. Okay, what else can we be doing here for you? To put out some of the other things that we need to get out there, the good news of what's happening here. That's okay.
Yeah, well, good. So we really haven't utilized the service yet?
We have not.
Okay.
This is for the upcoming school year.
We didn't pay this fee last year?
No, we did not.
Okay.
This is a new opportunity.
And who are the other districts that we're getting in bed with on this contract?
It's the Southeasters Superintendent's Group. So it is Rochester, Barrington, Exeter, Dover, Somersworth. There's more. I believe there's Hampton. I believe there's...
Newmarket.
14, Newmarket. I believe there's 14 districts. There are three...the pricing is by size of district. We're in the itty-bitty districts pricing range.
Great, that was going to be my question.
We are not paying what Exeter and Dover are paying for this service.
Was that the only question? Is it multi-year?
It's...at this point, it's a one-year. And we are not bound to continue if this proves not to be what we need it to be. So it's...it would be a one-year deal and...
I know our policy states that if it's under $5,000, it's your discretion to spend, but I think the intent of those limits are kind of crossing over boundaries here on this one if we're getting into business with other districts, you know, contractually speaking with this LLC.
It's consortium pricing, but it's our individual contract with this group. So it's because we are a member of the Southeasters Superintendent's Group that I can get this price for the district, but my contract is not contingent on Dover's, is not contingent on this is...it's a standalone for us, but it's part of this group. So it's group pricing.
Okay.
And I talked with Patty when I signed that because I was like, I didn't really remember right away and we did talk about that at a meeting, so...
Could you next question?
The others are small dollars and more suggestions for improvement going forward.
So you want to just wait till we have manifests at the next meeting or do you... Or are they just...
That was the only one.
I'm sorry, financials.
That was really the only one I withheld my signature on even though, you know, I didn't have other board members could sign and move it forward. The others were mainly, again, small dollar, just for my clarification and for future.
Okay. And I did not get to email today to send you answers ahead of time, so we can...
Okay. Health trust agreement for dental coverage.
Essentially, the health trust, which has gone through multiple changes over the last three years, I think was going through their files and determined that they had never actually received a signed agreement for health trusts, as if it's a new membership agreement. We have used health trust in the past for our dental coverage and so they have responded by sending us all the documentation that basically tells us what our rights are, what their rights are. And the second document is about the COBRA requirements that if we have someone who leaves the district, they are entitled to dental COBRA. I did ask that the document, let's see, I asked the paralegal, that I said, you know, the document refers to medical and that's not what we have with you. And she did respond and saying that it was their standard resolution that it calls for medical and/or other benefit plans. We are only using dental coverage for our services and we would not be...obviously, they're not doing property liability anymore. They're not doing workers' compensation anymore. They don't do unemployment and really all they're doing are health benefits, dental
And so we have the paperwork and certainly, you know, we could, as a board, that could be signed as, you know, just as is or could be lined through an initial that we're not doing, we're doing dental, but not health. And so we have that purview as well. Or I should say you have.
So what are you looking for tonight?
We need board signatures on the paperwork.
Okay. There was nothing in it.
It's a few lines down. It's on page... Joe?
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
I just have a question. So if I'm understanding this right, these were sent...this was from back in 2015 and the original documents were never signed?
That's what I'm understanding from health trust.
Because on the front page there, it says, "Please return the signed membership agreement by August 1st, 2015. Until they receive those materials, the existing participation agreement will remain in effect." So does that mean that you're still acting under the original agreement? We've not...
Actually, yes. Nothing has changed. No terms have changed or anything like that. We get the dental renewal premiums. We get a proposed rate during budget season and we get an actual in the spring. So not much has really changed.
So there was a contract prior to 2015 and that's just what's held in effect?
It was, yeah, it's a membership agreement, right. There's no membership fees. I'm trying to think what else I can tell you.
No, no, it's not. I was just wondering where you guys stand right now.
Status quo, really.
Okay.
I think this is a matter of their cleaning up their files.
It says for the board to sign. You can just see one person.
Okay, duly authorized, so...okay. So...and does this need to be board or is this me? Because as I look at it...
I think whether the board authorizes to sign it.
All right.
I think in the past, it has been the business administrator.
And this was actually addressed to my predecessors, so...
Right.
Once removed, yes, thank you.
Does the board just want to authorize Ruttell to sign it or do you want a board member to sign it? What do you prefer?
Fine with Ruttell, I don't worry.
Thank you. Do we need to let them know that Mr. Welker is not the...
They're not now.
Oh, yeah.
They know that now.
Make sure they're still mixing here.
We did let them know.
When I read through those documents, a great deal of the language was all about changing from membership to participant. So, yeah, there was a bunch of legal jargon in there and that needed to be updated.
Any other new business? Old business, policies, a bunch of them.
Okay, so the policies there are a group. As we started to change, one, it was kind of you pull the thread and things start to unravel. And so the group of eight policies here, I've referenced and cross-referenced and gone back and forth eight or nine times till my eyes were blurry and then I went back to it, to make sure that all of the references to either due process or the way that suspensions and...that it reads the same in each one. And they all cross-referenced the same RSAs that they need to. And so as a group, this is that group that we had tabled in several different permutations until this one was kind of...that's all eight. So that's what we're looking at. There's a lot of them. They did go back to policy committee briefly and so they are here before you in all of their digital glory.
But all of these have had a first read at this point?
They've had some type of...they were fronted to say, "This is what we need to be looking at." You've seen each of these in some version, but they weren't necessarily all for first reads. Some of them were tabled because we said, "No, well, if this one needs to be, then this one and this one aren't either, so we're not going to go there." So...
The one that was the gating item was JIA.
Right.
That was the one that has a board...
Well, and actually, JIA only has...it's actually very, very small. It says, "You will have a procedure." And then JICD, discipline and due process, is the one that outlines everything in its entirety, which why it's not JIA-R, it's not. It's a different letter and it...because that's what they do. I don't...
Ooh.
So because I...okay, well, and JIA-R, as I've seen it in other districts, says C-J-I-C-D. So I didn't bother to try to do that piece. I just said, "Okay, we'll take the existing piece and work it."
Do you want to take these one at a time or you want to take them as a group?
The board prefers.
And do you want to take them as a first read and come back? There's a lot here, but I figured I'd at least give you a little bit of...that's why. And some of these are eight and 10-page policies. They're lengthy.
So only one has been a first read?
JIA, we did accept as a first read.
Yes. And then...
Knowing that it was going to influence all of you.
JICH also went as a first read for tobacco and controlled substances. And then we started to go to weapons and stopped because that was going to be contingent on JICH, the language, and then JICK, and then everything just we stopped. So those have come that way, but...and JBAA, sexual harassment, and JI, student rights and responsibilities, were referenced in the other twos, in the other four. So I pulled those back in because, again, it's pull that thread and everything starts to unravel. So those are the other two. You've not seen those in this version, although you do have JBAA as a number instead of a
Actually, I think you have JI as numbers as well. And in the policies, I tried to put, "Here's what it used to be and here's what it will be moving forward."
Were these already policies that we had in existence that were on numbers? Because I'd like to see the last time that they were approved. Usually that's on our...on the policy.
I didn't go through that because some of these have shifted...
I didn't go through that, because some of these have shifted fairly significantly, I didn't do that piece, but I did, for instance, um, let me see here, JI... JICK...
Are you asking about when it was...
Revised 2014, 2004, 2006. Yeah, and then it was former, and this one actually encompasses three other policies for JICK. It was embedded in 5130.9, 4251.2, and 4251.3, so...
So you want to motion for them to, as a first read, today?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
So can we, Mr. Frida, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so now they're all first reads.
Okay. First reads in their current form.
Okay.
Before we move on, just like to congratulate Ruth Ellen, for, this was not easy.
No, right.
There was all kinds of, every little corner someplace was a reference to something, and she had to go and put them all together. So this, this looks like, it's a lot of work for us to read, but it's a lot of work to coordinate, so thank you for doing it.
Okay. District Discipline and Behavior Strategies, discussion.
Okay, so a few meetings ago, we had a beginning of a discussion at the board level. The question asked about what our, I think it started with culture and climate and moved to a discussion about discipline philosophies across the three schools, and where the intersections between those were, and what that looked like, and wanting to have a broader discussion about where we were in that process, and what still is the work before us, I guess. And so we've obviously been discussing pieces of these as an admin team for quite some time. What we're looking at across the board is really that discipline, first and foremost, is a teaching opportunity. We've talked about wanting to move toward a more formal restorative justice program across district. That's not going to happen on a dime, that's going to be a process. But really wanting to make sure that we look at how... Back up. What the common pieces are between buildings, what the commonalities are. Obviously, some of the discipline and behavior interventions, as we look at the early levels, is going to be somewhat different than it would be at the high school because of developmental stages. But the philosophy behind it, the idea that these are kids, and, you know, there's going to be mistakes, but we want to help them understand the role of personal responsibility, and I think that's really the biggest piece of this. It's not discipline that's punitive, it's helping them to understand what personal responsibility means, and how does that then temper what they do and what we do in response to that? And so I think that's probably the linchpin in all of the pieces. Each of the three buildings has some type of tiered system that they're looking at in regard to intervention, behavioral interventions. It doesn't mean that this is a strict PBIS system, but the same as any type of intervention system with academics, it's tiered, here's the general expectation, here's what it looks like for someone who needs a little bit more structure, and here's what someone, it looks like for someone who needs a lot more structure. The same thing within a behavior system, and understanding that if we differentiate for academics, that there's going to be some differentiation for behavior as well. And so that's kind of the overall framework. It looks a little bit different at each level, and rather than have me try to speak to each level, I have each of the principals here to talk a little bit more about what that looks like there. But we had some very good conversations about where we still want to go with this. Obviously, it's a work in progress, and anytime you introduce humans into the mix, things get messy. But we are looking to continue to move forward, to provide some more supports for teachers in what that can look like, and I'll let you guys thumb wrestle for who's first.
I think it's seven, maybe we'll start with the youngest. Start with the youngest, you'll leave up an age. Who's being asked? So at Valley View, we've been working on this on and off, over the last two or three years, we've worked with staff since probably February. It's all still a work in progress, so what I'm telling you is what we have now, but we're still working on it as we go. So for us, the concepts behind the leader and me really set the tone for personal responsibility. We have a discipline system that's guided by the response to intervention that you had discussed with the three tiers. The tier one is classroom managed, so that's either by the paraprofessional or the teacher within the classroom, and that's the piece, those are some of the pieces we're working on, is to really clarify that. Tier two is addressed by the administration, and tier three is assigned to the behavior interventionists and administration. And this is an ongoing team approach, so some of those tier three kids that are what you might call the high flyers, the frequent flyers, any of those things, that's dealt with through the behavior interventionist administration, and then we may pull in guidance, we may pull in case managers of their special ed, and we've also been pulling in the BCBA, the Board Certified Behavior Analyst. I was just calling it BCBA. We do have a targeted team for the building that meets at least monthly to address students with repeated tier two and tier three behaviors. So that's kind of where we're, we're doing that, but we're also still looking at it and saying, some things need to be tweaked, some things need to be changed, and have met with staff, met with teachers frequently, were able to pull paraprofessionals in later on, and have gone through that to kind of see where we need to make improvements.
What was tier two again? Tier one's classroom?
Tier two is administration, right now. If, if they've, we have, every classroom has a, I, um... I was on vacation this morning, so I'm a little off. Every classroom has a clip chart in their room, and it's the same clip chart throughout the building, and it's pink, purple, blue, green, yellow, orange, red, and every classroom has the same thing, and they all have the same consequences for those. So if a student clips down to red, and you've already processed with them, and you've already gone through it with them, and it's still not working, then it's kind of a, hey, can you, you know, Cindy or Rebecca, can you speak to them, process, try to process with them to kind of get a different view, and maybe getting somebody who's the principal might help with that processing a little bit more. It also kind of gives us a heads up of, is this somebody we need to have the targeted team meet on? Is this something that we need to help the teacher do a behavior chart on? But that's kind of where that piece comes in. So that's the tier two is administration right now.
Okay.
At what point does the parent get notified in those tiers?
Parent is notified every time a, what we call a tree form is filled out, or a tier form is filled out. So either they're contacted by the teacher to say, by the teacher to say, in my classroom today, I hadn't clipped him down to red because he was doing XYZ, so that's a phone call, or if we can't get ahold of him by phone, it's an email. If it's more severe, then Cindy or I might call, and then if it's one of our frequent flyers, it might be from the tree room, Mrs. Cron may call and say, I saw him again, and, you know, we're working on it, but if it's somebody that is a frequent kid, then it's somebody that she typically will contact. But somebody is, anytime that they get one of those forms, that they are contacted.
So these clip charts are in every classroom?
Clip charts, yep.
Every teacher uses them?
Yep.
Pairs?
They, yep, they have been told how to use them. It depends on the teacher. Most, I'm assuming that most teachers have said, yes, go ahead and clip kids up and down. It's something I haven't asked, but I couldn't, but, I mean, that's, that's the understanding. When we presented it, it was any teacher, any para, any staff member that was in there could say, you know, you're not, you're not on task, you're not doing what you're supposed to, I'm going to clip you down. It travels with the class as well. So, you know, Ruth Ellen's class is going down to PE, and they take the chart with them, and it hangs up on the wall in PE, so that you know which kids, you know, are having difficulty, and Ms. Cook will either move it up or down, you know, based on their behavior in her class. So it's a consistent system, everybody knows it, everybody has the same language, so we're all on the same page. And it's something, like, some of those kids that have difficulty, I can walk up to any one of the, you know, K through three, and I can say, hey, what color are you on today? And try to give that boost of some positive reinforcement of, that's awesome, and, oh, come on, next time, we'll move it up. You can move up and down on the clip chart, you don't just move down. So if you have difficulty, and then you do something great, then, hey, we're going to clip you back up again to try to rebuild that self-esteem that we made a mistake, but we're going to move back up again.
When, you said when it was presented, when was it presented?
Clip charts was two years ago, so we've been doing those for two years. And that was something that, when we had our discussions, the staff felt were really positive, and they wanted to keep. That was something that was consistent across the board, so they wanted to keep that in place.
Okay. So this year, just this year, let's look at this year, were there any staff development days, early releases focused on this program?
Yes, several.
Several?
We started in February and met several times. Started with, my discussion to staff was, you, we have a lot of stuff on our plate, we have a lot of different things we're doing, I feel like there's too much on your plate, what do you think, in just regards to this, in just regards, just in regards to behavior, what do you think, you know, we were doing PBIS, leader and me, responsive classroom, we had teachers that were doing completely different individual plans, we had clip charts, we had teachers who were doing flip charts, we had charm bracelets, there was just a whole host of different things that people were doing, and we were like, we get, you got too much on the plate, what's the most important things? And kind of worked it down from there, and figured out what we felt were the most important things to focus on. They chose the clip charts as one thing, they chose the leader and me language, not necessarily the full program that we had been doing for leader and me, but that positive language and the seven habits. And then they chose, they wanted us to all revisit the book, the first six weeks of school, so that was purchased for every staff member to read over the summer. And those are the things that we, that they felt were, let's just keep these and then build from there. So as I said, it's a work in process. We decided that, we came up with some, whatever rubric regarding how behavior should look in different places, and that's as far as we've gotten.
And you also started the year with this whole piece, too. You revisit, because I remember going in the first day, and you were talking about clip charts.
Yep.
Right off the bat, so it wasn't until February that you started this. You did start the year with it, too.
The clip charts had been two years, so this was the second year we'd done it, we did review it at the beginning of the year, there had, we made some tweaks just because there were some people that were unclear about what was supposed to go on and what was supposed to happen, like, if you got to yellow, what we were supposed to do, so we clarified that over the summer, and then came back and re-clarified it for staff. If this is, you know, if you're on this color, this is what you should be doing. If you're this, this is what you should be doing. And they had, we had found that we had a lot of severe behaviors, so a lot of the things we did last summer related to those severe behaviors, and how do we deal with those in your classroom? And that was kind of our focus at the beginning of the year. I mean, we, we had some really severe kids that we dealt with at the beginning of the year, and that was kind of our focus in the beginning. And then it was like, okay, we still have some things that we need to look at globally, and so we looked at those things globally.
Mr. Frida?
How do the kids respond to this?
The kids love the clip charts. They, you know, they, I think if we, because it has the positive aspect of, you know, you can always move back up again, you can always improve your day, they, they like it, you know, and, and some of those kids that I check in with and I'll see in the hallway will come running up to me, I got blue today, I got blue today! I'm like, yay, high five, you know? So it's a nice positive reinforcement. Some of the kids that do have repeated behaviors, they struggle a little with that, and that's why we kind of have tree come in, and they may have a modified plan slightly, that we're not going to clip them down every single time, because they'll just stay on red their entire day. So they may have a clip chart, a behavior chart that says, you know, after this, after these things, then we would clip them down. So it's, like, we base it on what the child needs, we try to meet that child's need wherever they're at.
And, and every day is a new day?
Exactly. Yeah, and then every day they come in, and all their names, all their clips are, whatever the teacher is using are back on green, and everybody starts on green every day. So you don't carry it over from the day before, you always start on green.
So you mentioned a tier report.
Yep.
So that's something that a copy is kept in the student's file? I'm just thinking in terms of when a new teacher gets a new class, or, you know, a student is new to a teacher, how do you balance what their history is, so that, you know, they know to accommodate and kind of adjust the expectation for that one child versus allowing a student to be disruptive for the whole class? You know what I mean?
So we don't keep them in the file?
How does a teacher know if this student is part of a target?
Sure. We don't keep them in the file, it would make our files rather large. We do keep it in Power School, so it is in there, and it is documented, all, every, every form that we get goes, is documented in Power School, so that I can go in and, if, you know, if you came to me and said, so-and-so's in my class, and I'm starting to have some issues, what happened last year? We can say, you know, either we'll know, because they went to targeted team, and we can discuss it with them. I would hope that we would have gone to them before then. Typically, we would meet with them at the beginning of the year. We also have teachers that meet at the end of the year and say, hey, you know, he works with Mrs. Cron a lot, he's down there, these are some of the behaviors he has, but then just, Mrs. Cron would meet with them and say, this is what we've been doing, you know, do we want to, depending on the child, do we want to start off the year with their behavior chart, or do we want to give them a chance and see how they do? And then as soon as we start to have some difficulty, put it on, so it's dependent upon the student, but it's always clearly expressed to the next teacher, either through the previous teacher or through Mrs. Cron, or if it's, if it's a really severe kid, it would be Cindy or myself that speaks with them.
So when you say tier two administration, that doesn't necessarily refer to either you or Mrs. Berry, Ms. Berry?
No, it does, right now, yes.
Tier two?
Yep.
You've mentioned Ms. Cron.
Ms. Cron is, was be, is our behavior interventionist, she does the tier three kids, they have, she's the one that's helping teachers with individual behavior plans, she may help teachers with a kid that specifically, you know, is a frequent flyer. She's...
Sorry.
Sorry. She has...
Had to miss, again.
I think right now, this past year, she ended with nine students that would check in with her, check out with her, had, you know, motor breaks or sensory breaks with her, or who would take a break with her when they were starting to get a little frustrated, have lunch breaks with her, so there were nine kids that she was, you know, frequently with, but she also will help any teacher with a behavior plan, or, hey, I'm having trouble with this kid, what can I do? She's part of the targeted team, so she also helps in that aspect as well.
What's her certification?
She is EH certified, ED certified, sorry, been a special ed teacher a while, she's ED certified, and she is, has worked with kids with behavior, so she, she does a nice job with them.
I put you in your hand.
I do, but it was actually answered.
Okay. Anything else?
So on the opposite end of Mike, questioning about, you know, they do start over each day on green, each kid knows, they can start over tomorrow, you don't have to dwell on what happened yesterday, you can turn it around. How is that approach made with, you know, the extreme children, the ones that are...
Same way. Everybody starts new the next day, everybody is green the next day, we don't carry it up. I mean, unless it's something that is going to have a consequence, an in-school suspension, an out-of-school suspension, those types of things, we do have those consequences, but if it's one of our frequent flyers, every day starts new, they get a new behavior chart every day, you know, they check in with Mrs. Cron every morning, and it's a new day, I know you had a struggle yesterday, but we're going to, we're going to work to make it, you know, make it better today.
Because I just think of, this is the most challenging part, I think, in public education. It must be, it has to be. I mean, it's the most challenging part in parenting, is getting behaviors and sticking to your guns, when, you know, you need to hold them accountable and whatnot, and reinforce the positive behaviors and reward accordingly, but not to the extreme where all of a sudden they're misbehaving so that they get the rewards, you know, it's a very fine balance. So I recognize how challenging this is. I'm just very curious as to, and I'm not saying I saw this in this one building, and I can save this kind of question for the end after we hear all three, from all three, but how do we stop a particular group of kids, let's say a grade level, or even one child, from getting labeled as the bad kid? You know? And, and knowing it? Because as adults, we can't help but have that, it's called a micro inequity, where you just like roll your eyes because that kid's coming. You know, how do we stop, make sure something like that doesn't happen?
So I know for some of us, some of the kids that are frequent, frequently misbehaving, because we do have the self-contained class, so the teachers will sometimes talk about the behavior, not the student, but talk about the behavior and say, you know, sometimes people can't control their behavior, you know, yes, that makes you upset, but we also sometimes, if it's a frequent kid, it may be something that that teacher or Mrs. Cron processes with that class. So if they've had a really bad incident, it's something that is talked about with the class, you know, how are you feeling? that is talked about with the class. You know, how are you feeling? We may have Mrs., Ms. Williams come up and talk with them. So we try to also address it that way too of, you know, no, it wasn't great what he did and no, it wasn't acceptable. But sometimes people can't control that and we need to, you know, start new the next day. So we do try to help in that if we think that it's, it's an issue in the classroom.
And also there's the rewards for the kids who aren't having issues. I mean, you had your Tiger Leaders this year that got certificates for no referrals all year. Good job. I mean,
We couldn't call them all up, but they all stood up. We have over 200. So we just said, all right, if you got this certificate, everybody stand up. Yay. So we have, and we do, we recognize them. Um, they, some of those, you know, we recognize kids for bucket fillers. So we do have a lot of other positive things. Uh, you know, I say we're doing all these disciplined things, but we do have a lot of other positive things that we do. You know, we recognize the kids that are on blue, that are on blue every day. You know, some of the teachers that have kids that are on blue, I have one teacher who has, I know, this is not gonna be, a string hanging from her thing and she'll clip them up on the paper clip that hangs from the string. And she's like, you're flying high today. That's awesome. Because they are on blue all the time and she just needed something to say, yes, I recognize that, you know, you're being so good every day. So there are other positive things that we're doing for those kids that, that don't have behaviors.
Can you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So you said that this is a work in progress and you're tweaking. So what do you anticipate will change for next year?
Um, some of the things we're looking at are, it's kind, as I had said in the beginning, we focus really on those severe behavior kids. And then we focused on kind of making some consistencies. This year, we're trying to look at the middle. And that's why that tier two is the administration right now, is because we're trying to really make it consistent. And, you know, if this happens, then this happens. And, and we have one consistent or two consistent people doing that to deal with those and just try to break some habits that we've had, um, and make some things more consistent than what we've, what we've been doing and that middle piece. So, and make it clear for teachers that, you know, yeah, he's sitting under the table and he's refusing to do work, but he's not hurting anyone. And I'll sit here and wait for him, but I'm not gonna drag him up from under the table. You know, some of those kinds of things to just, you know, make it consistent as to what's expected and what's gonna happen with some of the behaviors that we, we see that aren't very severe. So that's the piece we're working on right now.
Do you think we could see that rubric?
Uh, I don't have it with me, but, um, yes, I can get that to you.
Okay.
Email? Yep.
Can you talk to us a little bit more about what the processing piece looks like? Um, what does the processing piece look like if I'm off tier one and I'm heading down to your office and I'm sitting with you? What does that look like?
Um, so this is the piece that we're working on. But what we're trying to work towards is, um, you wouldn't come to me unless you were on red and you were, um, so you had gone from green to, um, yellow to orange to red. So you wouldn't come down to me unless you came to that. And if you were just, uh, say you were just, you know, weren't working or weren't to, we would have the teacher process with you first. What's going on? Is there something, you know, is there something that happened at home? Is, do you not understand what you're doing? You know, kind of process through that way to try to figure it out there. But if it's something that's continuing through the day, they would come down and do something very similar with me. You know, what's going on? Why are we, you know, what do you, do you know what you're supposed to do? What is the rule? What's, what's expected of you? You know, and make a plan as to, okay, I'm gonna go back to class and I'm gonna do X, Y, Z. And, you know, and then I would check back in, or Cindy would check back in and say, hey, did you follow our plan? You know, how did your day end? Were you able to get your color back up again? That would be just one scenario. It's gonna depend on, on the, on the child. That's the piece we're working on. Hopefully this summer we'll be doing some of that.
Yeah, I have one last question about Leader and Me. When did we start Leader and Me? Remember?
We just finished our fifth year. Um, so that was the end of the grant from Leader and Me.
Right.
If we had wanted to continue, um, the price more than doubled. And so we felt we wanted the concepts of Leader and Me, but we weren't necessarily, um, we didn't really wanna do the process that they had because it was very focused on some other things. And we wanted to kind of focus on this personal responsibility and, and going through it this way. So we liked the concepts. We liked the habits. We liked that philosophy. But just some of the hoops we had to jump through, I guess, to, to do what they wanted us to do wasn't really aligned with what we wanted, our end goal was.
Did you see a difference? Cause I mean, Leader and Me was so celebrated.
Yep. I think we do see a difference.
But do you see a difference between this year not being as prescribed as you had been in the past, I guess is what I'm saying?
I think, um, this year it was, this year was the year we realized that we had too many things on the plate. Because when I would go into a classroom, it would be, she's doing, um, you know, PBIS and she's doing, you know, dollars and she's doing the clip chart and she's doing a flip chart and she's, you know, so it was, it was, that was kind of how we realized that not everybody was on the same page. Not everybody had agreed that they wanted to do Leader and Me fully. Um, and they did it initially and then it was like, I don't really like the way it goes. And so it was kind of, that was, so this year was kind of a, hmm, we, we need to figure out which direction we wanna head in.
Will you continue with the language of the seven habits?
Yep. Yep. That's what we wanna do is continue with the language. Like I said, it was more the hoops that they, you know, wanted us to jump through. You should be doing this and you should, and it was like, but we really need to work on this over here. You know, you should be making, you know, notebooks and putting, you know, having flyers. And it's like, but we wanna work on the behavioral piece over here. Or we wanna work on, you know, our academics or we wanna, it's what was just,
It's kind of forgetting that you start out with a brand-new kindergarten class every year.
Yeah.
So many something kids.
Yeah. So it was, we liked the philosophy. We liked the wording. We liked the terminology. We liked the processing pieces that we got from that. But it was kind of a, let's kind of make it our own. Let's make it something that everybody agrees to, everybody wants to do.
I hope it can sustain. My experience tells me that when you stray away from something that's been prescribed like that, that it doesn't last. And that's the case with PBIS at the middle school, I can tell you right now.
I think, I think part of the reason we, um, were having the difficulties, we had some teachers who were only prescribing to PBIS in our building. Like they had done the initial work with Leader and Me, but then they continued to just do PBIS in their room. So they wouldn't talk about the seven habits at all and they wouldn't do those things. And so it was like, you can't, and, and it was making it difficult for discipline as well. So I would have a kid come in and I'd say, are you being proactive? And they'd look at me like I had two heads. What do you mean, am I being proactive? And that would be a teacher that was, wasn't focusing on the seven habits and was using the four school rules. And so that's where we found that we were having an issue as well was not everybody speaking the same language. And we found so much success with the consistency of the clip chart that we felt that we needed to say, what are we doing as a whole? And everybody needs to agree to it. And it took lots of conversations, but I think we got to something that we agreed to, to start us off.
And perhaps with some true consensus as opposed to, yep, yep?
Yep. I think it's true. I mean, we had some really nice conversations about what we're doing and what people liked and didn't like. Um, I think it really brought out some of the things that we had had issues with.
Uh, this is just more of a, a comment, um, overall, but I've heard a lot in, just in regards to behavior and dealing with different children in the classroom, that sometimes it's very time-consuming and time is taken away from the overall class to deal with one child. Um, and that all the other students in effect have to pretty much sit there and wait for this child to, um, either be reprimanded or, um, calm down or things to that event. Do you find that the clipboard is more expedient in getting the class back to the classwork?
Um, some of those, those kids are, would be those frequent flyer kids. And that's typically where Mrs. Kron might step in or Mrs. McKenney who works with her, or myself or Mrs. Berry might step in to assist with that. Um, I think that it helps in that, you know, the teacher can have that visual cue or have the clip, the, it's on a clipboard. That's why I keep saying, their, their behavior chart on a clipboard to kind of address those behaviors without trying to be disruptive to the rest of the class. But it's a learning curve. There are some kids that we can't, we've done everything in our bag of tricks and still have not been able to figure out how to, how to help them. So it's all on learning curve.
Thank you.
So we're in, because of all the transition at Henry Wilson, um, and Cheryl, Mrs. Peabody and I being there in here together, um, we're sort of in a bit more of transition than things that you heard at Valley View. So we're right now in the process of clarifying, um, tiered level of supports and setting the expectations and protocols of those levels and then those tiers. Um, recently we've been working with, um, our consultant Andrew Reid, who you've been hearing lots about lately. Um, and one of our, um, our three sort of parts to our stool work sort of working on are, um, the curriculum piece, which we've talked a lot about, um, continuing our RTI work and also bringing in the behavior piece that will, um, work well with, um, the RTI sort of work that we're doing, um, which is also tiered and the kids are kind of getting used to it and the staff as well. Um, and so within all that work we've been doing, we've been working on the vision specifically of Henry Wilson, not just of, and how that sort of dovetails to the mission of the Farmington School District. Um, and so the work that the teacher leaders did this summer, sorry, summer, spring into summer, um, with other input from other staff that were able to come, um, we've sort of begun fleshing out a vision that talks about, includes behavior, um, including, um, students' social, emotional, and academic success in respectful environments. Um, and that all members of our school community will participate in the learning process with self-discipline, compassion, tolerance, and empathy. So those, um, that vision will start to drive sort of what our tiers will look like within the building and, and protocols and practice. Um, currently, um, the current work that we've been doing, Mrs. Peabody casually met with, um, teachers that wanted to drop in, um, on, I believe they were Tuesdays during the week, um, of people that wanted to sort of talk about things that were, they felt were important things in the building that were happening around behavior. Um, not only are we in a middle school, but we've also been in a middle school where the staff hasn't had a lot of support the last few years. Um, and that hasn't gone unnoticed by us. I think sometimes people think we are not noticing it, but we are. And we're just as overwhelmed, I think, as a lot of other people are some days. Um, and so this is a very welcomed, um, environment that we're trying to create. Um, so, um, teachers were able to give feedback on things that they thought, sort of hotspots and, um, and issues within our building. Um, and then Mrs. Peabody sort of started fleshing out a type of rubric for our staff to begin, uh, filling in of what they wanted expectations of kids to be in. Um, a lot of our staff does, um, share a lot of similar philosophies and kind of, with just putting a name so that people sort of know what they're relating to, um, a lot of PBIS philosophies, um, responsive classroom. Um, people feel strongly about those, um, those, those avenues and sort of the philosophy that goes behind that. And so sort of trying to bridge what other people are feeling as they feel strongly about their philosophies with what's gonna work best for our kids is sort of our orkana. Um, we're also, um, hoping that by creating this, this will improve our culture and climate across the building. Um, and they'll, um, they'll be our driving principles for future work, um, towards recognition of student behavior and, um, and also interconnect those with our visions of Henry Wilson and also the Farmington School District. Sorry to be sorry.
When you meet with your administrative team, do you guys talk about what each building is doing? Is there some kind of consistent language that, that either starts with Valley View and moves up?
Yep.
Is that, is that, that is,
Yeah, I think we're, uh, we're in a frustrating place right now at Henry Wilson. Um, I'll speak for anybody that maybe wants to make eye contact with me over there. Um, in that we are trying, we're, we're in the middle school. So we try to bridge the gap between what's going on in the elementary school and then also providing them some support of what they're gonna need when they get up here to the high school. So by starting those conversations and signing on for year two and being able to keep consistent things, we can start moving in to those more consistent conversations.
Have you developed a philosophical sort of feeling about the approach to discipline and student management? Like what do you think? How do you like to see? You've probably got one. So let's hear it. Because my argument is this. My argument always has been that the building administration sets the philosophy for the building. I mean, it really does. I mean, it obviously comes from district, but, but your approach and your belief in how to manage student behavior and what discipline looks like in your building, to me, sets the tone.
Yep.
And, and my argument is you either get on board or you don't.
Um, so what discipline looks like versus what I see discipline potential looking like?
What do you wanna see it look like? What is your thoughts on it?
Um, well, it's middle school. So kids deserve a chance to, to fix their mistakes. But they also need to be held accountable for their actions. Um, we need to hold true to policy. Um, those are there for a reason. Um, and kids need to know what they are. They're old enough in middle school, particularly again in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade to know what the school expectations are and to be able to follow them. But at the same time, I, I'll be open and honest. I don't prescribe to a, um, I have a hard time philosophically myself prescribing to a specific behavior matrix that is going to tell me a child is throwing a pencil across the room or doesn't become prepared to class and this is the specific consequence. Um, I don't think kids fit into the same, um, pattern. I, you have to look at each kid specifically, but you also do have to hold them accountable to the expectations and safety. So, in a nutshell, I know it's kind of broad, but, middle school.
I would argue that you won't find any research that backs up matrices, matrices work well, you know? You know, a rubric of expectation is one thing. But this, if you do this, you get this.
I hope I'm being clear. I don't, I hope I'm being clear. I don't prescribe to that.
I know you don't.
Okay.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Questions for Ms. Richardson?
So, so currently, you know, for example, you're getting a lot of new teachers coming into that building this fall.
Yep.
How will they know what the expectation is on them before they say, this student is being too disruptive, go to the office?
Um, so what we started to have our teams do at the end of last year was work individually as well of sort of what the expectations of each grade level team are going to be. Um, and so Mrs. Peabody had given out, um, sort of a rubric of general expectations of where we could kind of start from. That's not to say that's going to be, um, like our bible to follow right now. It's just a, a starting place because we are a work in progress. Um, and we're not saying this is what you're going to do right now. Uh, but this is where we're gonna start. Um, and then from that rubric, staff was asked to meet within their teams to sort of clarify their expectations of, um, I'm gonna call Laura out of there just because she's a seventh grade teacher, um, and Angel actually. So they, um, they all work in, they're, they happen to be specialized case managers. And so they work in everybody's classroom within that team. And so kids are rotating from math to ERA and, um, a related art and socialities and science. So the kids are all moving and then they have paras that are following them to lunch and recess and whoever's covering that. And so they, as a team, sort of set the expectation and they have procedures and protocols that they make the kids aware of, of this is what's gonna happen in all of seventh grades. So you're not gonna go to either one of their classrooms and expect a different answer from somebody else. Um, they have aligned themselves. And so, um, if we can sort of get our teams aligning themselves, then we can kind of begin aligning everybody on the same page. I know that's superving too, but we have to start somewhere.
Exactly. It makes complete sense. Cause if you don't have documented standard for all the adults to work off of, there's no prior of improvement.
And so teachers will be expected to post their procedures and protocols. What do kids do when they come in? What is the expectation? Keeping things, um, simple, um, abiding by looking at our core values, um, and also kind of taking in, you know, being respectful. I hate to use the PBIS words, but those basic principles of responsibility, take your responsibility for yourself. Um, and that's all sort of aligned in our, our vision of what we've created for Henry Wilson to align with the Farmington School District vision. Um, and that vision is like a three-year vision. So where we want, where do we want our kids and our students and our staff to be in three years from now? And then we can reevaluate after that.
Um, you have almost a unique perspective there because in Valley View, they do, the, each classroom is almost isolated. So I can understand how each teacher had their own practice in regards to dealing with this. But, uh, in middle school where they do change from classroom to classroom, um, I would encourage, uh, consistency and continuity just because it's also easier for the children
Yep.
to understand and what they're expected of, what's expected of them. My question though, at this point, um, and going forward, where do you see parental involvement needing to happen or expected to happen?
Um, it would be great if, if we were feeling supported at the school by sort of the expectations that we set. Um, a lot of our parents do support what we're doing. A lot of our, Rebecca sort of touched on earlier, our heavy hitters kids. Um, and Angie, you sort of talked about a little bit earlier about how, how do we not label those kids that always are the frequent flyers? And so I think not only do we tend to that naturally as humans, all humans do that. And I think kind of the, the parental side comes into that. It's gotta be frustrating hearing from the school, a lot of time on your child's behavior. Um, but just, um, the biggest piece would be if, if we're expecting, um, if we're respecting our students and we're expecting our students to be respectful in turn, um, it would be nice to be appreciated as a professional all the time.
And you have a unique opportunity because you're the one constant in their life from grade four to eight. You and your new assistant principal. And so that should get better. That should get better. As people meet you and understand how you're gonna run your building and what your expectation is, I would think that over time that will get better. Mr. Freedom, you had any hand up?
Yeah, I, I have two things. None of them are questions. Thank you for including empathy. I think it's very important for empathy in kids and I congratulate you for that.
I can't take credit for that.
I can't take credit for that, but it's the team, the staff.
But thank you for your team. I think that's great. And the other comment is I really like the color thing. And so if you were going to bridge somehow, the, the de-emphasis of a negative language and the emphasizing the color instead, even though it translates, then that might be a good thing for you to do is to carry on some kind of color coding that they would understand from.
Take that back to fourth. Maybe not so many colors.
Right, not so many. Don't have to be so specific, but they understand what it means to be blue, red, and, you know, and so they could, if you could continue that language, they could, they might bring that all the way through in some manner, shape, or form.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
At Farmington High School, we're similar in a sense that we have, we look at it in three different phases. Tears if you, if you wish. Obviously, our goal is for our students to understand their responsibility within our school, but also understand what it's going to be like when they leave Farmington High School. We also look at it from a perspective of the accountability of students, not to just the administration, but to the classroom teachers, the powers, and everybody else they come in contact with. And so what we ask our teachers to do as best they can is handle as much of their own discipline within their classrooms as they possibly can. Certain behaviors obviously would justify that administrative intervention would come in place. Along those lines, we talk about whether it be a quick conversation with the child right after class about some of the things that are going on in the classroom, whether their behaviors are there, potentially a teacher detention where that time would be spent having a conversation, being able to develop a relationship with that child so that they get a better understanding of who the kid is and possibly get some insight as to what's going on with that individual. And certainly if that behavior continues to exist, or at the phone call, an email, some sort of a conversation with a parent just to kind of get them up to speed as to what's going on within those pieces of it. When those things don't work for that classroom teacher, then they would go to sort of that office referral piece, in which case myself, the assistant principal, potential case managers, school counselors would also be involved. We try to involve the teacher as best we can. Again, going back to the idea of accountability to the classroom teacher is of the utmost importance. We can certainly deal with that discipline down in the main office. However, that child has to go back to that classroom. And if there's no teacher interaction, that child is either going back mad because they feel like the teacher, you know, rode him up or got him in trouble. So the best we can kind of bridge some of those gaps, we do so. And then certainly the, the next level are certainly those policies and procedures that we have outlined, board policy where drugs, alcohol, things like that, where whether we want to or not, it doesn't matter because there's a set, you know, the three to five day suspension for a fight, 10 day suspension for this. So it's really black and white when it gets to that part of it. But overall, at Farmington High School, we understand that every kid's an individual, much like Valley View and Henry Wilson. We try to work with each individual to help change those behaviors. And so different pieces look different for kids. They're not all coming in with the same background. And I continually work with our classroom teachers, our guidance, our paraprofession, everybody that comes in contact, that we can't just assume that the kids understand what those expectations are. We'd like to think that they have the things that we want them to have when they walk through their doors, but not all kids have those pieces of it. So we want to make sure that we clearly identify what it is that our expectation. On the opening days, as part of our first day or two during advisories and throughout the day, we go through the handbook with the kids. And so we highlight different parts of the handbook in terms of, you know, what would get you an administrative detention, what would potentially get you an in-school suspension, out of school, and things like that. When possible, we talk about the idea of titles, you know, the trust, the integrity, the genuineness, empathy, respect, and those pieces of it. Much more often than not, a lot of our teachers, in their course syllabus, in their classroom expectations, will outline, you know, what is trust, what is integrity to help support. So that's not just a poster up on the wall, there's some substance behind that. And so when we talk to kids about some of that stuff, you know, we look at that piece of it. You know, I'd like to say it's 100% foolproof, but it's not. You know, that idea of empathy, a lot of times, in certain cases, we become apathetic because we know where the kid's coming from, we know some of the things that go wrong with that child's life. So sometimes it's a fine line because it's not black and white. There is no black and white situation for any kid. And so, you know, kids are coming in with different needs, and our goal is to try to meet those kids' needs. And if we're able to meet those needs, then they're success. They're success behaviorally and they're success with the academic part of it. So that's our review.
Questions?
So do I understand that there isn't a consistent policy throughout all the teachers? They all set their own?
No, they have certain expectations within their classrooms about what, what they expect when a kid comes in, whether it be books, notebooks, things like that. They have our handbook, which is the set of expectations that they go by.
So the difference is more classroom procedure as far as transitions and that sort of thing?
So you said that, you know, you definitely a tiered philosophy here as well. And forgive me if I missed this, but I only heard of two tiers.
Well, tier three would be the major infraction. So if a kid gets in a fight, has drugs, alcohol, weapons, and things like that, then that would be a systematic referral to the administration. We would be dealing with that on a separate piece. Tier two would be if the attempt by the classroom teacher to sort of modify that behavior wasn't working, then they would submit a behavioral form to the office and then we would sit down with the classroom teacher, sit down with the child, and kind of figure out what's going on from there. There would be some sort of disciplinary process, whether it be an administrative detention, potentially an in-school suspension because of that, or meeting, a parent meeting to work on that.
Yeah, I understand that, you know, severe incidences, but what about chronic, you know, just constantly disruptive and just genuine, seems not interested in coming here to learn?
And they would build up as well. So I mean, if, you know, we meet on a weekly basis, myself, the assistant principal, we would have the BABC, we'd have the school counselors, the social worker, and we talk, we talk about kids of concern, whether it be academic and behavior. Sometimes we'll have kids on behavior plans as well. And so that's where we'll have those conversations where we're seeing a consistency and we try to track so we know, okay, third period, you know, over the last three weeks, this kid's been falling down. Or it's been seventh period, so what's going on seventh period? And trying to figure out what that might be. Is it the fact that, you know, some of our kids are on the bus at 6:45 in the morning? And so by seventh period, they're, they're about heading, so we see what some of that behavioral piece comes into play.
So for the same type of infraction, is there the same consequences by different teachers or is it inconsistent?
It can be inconsistent, yeah. And we try to be as consistent we possibly can. But I think that anytime you have a bunch of individuals, they, they interpret those things differently. And what one person, even though we have that set of expectations, sometimes, you know, okay, I'll give you a break this time, where the other teacher might say, you know what, this is what the expectation I saw.
I would suggest you talk to the adults and get them to be consistent because that sends bad messages to kids if they expect different things.
And we certainly have, we've certainly had many faculty conversations and we've had many faculty member to faculty member about those things. Because you're right, Stan, what that does is it sends a mixed message, but it also, that person that's following the letter of the law, if you will, that kid's walking in there and then saying, well, I get away with it, Mr. Juzokas is class, how come you're doing this? You must be a jerk. And so that's where we try to get that consistency.
I'm going to be blunt about the perception that I've had for the past year. And it stems from when we were talking about the location for Hi-Set. And we were talking about whether or not Hi-Set could be moved, you know, that classroom could be moved physically into the building. And one of the considerations we were asked to make was some of those students just can't get along with the general population of students here. Is Hi-Set used as like a last ditch effort? We're going to, we're going to make sure this kid gets an education even if they don't want to be in this building?
The, Hi-Set is student chosen. It has nothing to do with myself or anybody here at Farmington High School. They choose it. It's because of it's, it's not an adult ed program. It's for kids, there's criteria that they have to meet. They have to be 16 years or older, they have to be a year behind their peers, and they also have to pass a preliminary test in order to be able to be looked at for that position, or that spot. So it's not used as a behavior management piece in any way. Oftentimes, it comes down to sitting down with the child and saying, okay, you know, you're 16 and a half or you're 17 years old, you got four credits, so let's take a look at what this looks like for you gradually. And we go through and we show them what it looks like, what they would have to do next year, the year after, and those types of things. Oftentimes, a kid will come to that decision, but it's not a behavior program. That's not what it's meant for.
Thank you.
But can I clarify? One of the things that was said in that earlier conversation was that oftentimes, the students who were there were students who had not necessarily found success in this building. And I think the distinction is that it's not about the building, but it's about finding an alternative for somebody and where they can find the success. And so, and so bringing them back in where some of the memories weren't as supportive as they might be was one of the things about bringing that program back here. If this wasn't where they'd found success, we weren't looking to reintroduce some of the issues that had been a barrier before, perhaps. If some of those peer interactions had been an issue, this, this helps remove that barrier and helps them focus on this program, but it's not because it's a behavioral program.
She answered my question.
Anything else? Thank you.
Just kind of general, it wasn't specifically for the high school, it's really for all three buildings, for all administrators really. And when I, I think back to my upbringing, my childhood, the, you know, the students who didn't really have a rhyme or reason for why they were being disruptive or for why they were being unsafe, you know? You had students who had a clear reason why, you know, they couldn't really respect boundaries, but then there were some that were like, why are you being like that? Why are you acting that way? Why do you need this negative attention sort of thing? And when I think back to the ones that had success, it was because of a connection with some adult that they saw on a regular basis. And it can happen at every age, more so with teens, I think. But definitely with the youngest of the youngest, sometimes the ones they're being sent to for targeted attention or, you know, to help them process, just don't have that right connection with them. And it's not something that's easy, it can't be put on paper. It's trial and error really, in a lot of ways, and figuring out what works with any one of these kids. And I think we're in a very unique situation where we're a small district. And we can take the time to do that with our tier three students. I'll just go ahead and throw that label on it. And it will make a huge difference for the general population if we do something like that. So I hope it was beneficial to hear from each other. I know you've been talking about it in meetings, but to have us kind of make you dummy it down for us because we don't see it every day. But the other piece I do want to also bring up is it's not just we're going to respect you as students, so you need to respect us as adults, but it's holding adults accountable who might slip on that once in a while.
Well, and that, that philosophy of responsibility or self-responsibility is also matters for the adults as well. They're responsible for their own actions and how they're interacting with students. And so if we're truly cultivating a culture of everyone is responsible for his or her own actions, that should permeate everything. It shouldn't be just kids, it's everybody. And that's my expectation for the district.
How would you classify after your first year here? Overall, if you look at the district overall, how do you, do you think that, what do you think? I'm not wording it well, but is discipline an issue? First of all, discipline's an issue in every school, so let's not, but my perception as board chair, when I call you and you're in a building putting out a fire with a kid and you're, you know, which happens often, and I don't call you that often, but it's happened, or I'm calling a principal for some particular reason and there's a student issue or whatever, it seems to me like we need to put more attention into this. It also seems to me like some of these tiers, and that term, I use that loosely with some of what I heard tonight, is a little archaic.
I would say, you have several questions in there, so...
Well, what's your opinion on discipline in the district? You just came from another one, so...
I did. And we'll leave that district where it is. I think we have some incredibly dedicated people who want the best for kids, who are looking for more tools in their toolbox to help deliver it. Because I think the needs are getting bigger and they're getting more, there may not be, I mean, every kid has needs, but there are, I think, a higher number of high-need kids in ways that their needs are framed in ways that we may not have seen to this extent ever. And so one of the focuses that I'm looking at in the next year is really how do we help teachers with classroom management? But it's not just management 101, it's that next step of how do you deal with somebody who is dealing with a type of emotional trauma and really can't articulate that? And it's permeating everything he's doing or she's doing and what that's happening around in the classroom. That's really something that I want to pull in for next year and help teachers understand what they can do, what the resources are that are available, and to minimize that impact and help kids get where they need to be. I think we have a lot of buy-in that is starting now to gain some momentum, where people are speaking some similar language, where they're starting to be willing to work together for the same aim, instead of, well, I have my way of doing it and you have your way, I can tolerate noise and you can't, so that's your problem. I think we're starting now to get a little bit better understanding across the board of, there need to be some common ground rules. We're not there yet, and I think a lot of it is that derailment of feeling, okay, I thought I knew what I was doing here and all bets are off with these three, and I'm not really sure how this impacts everything else. And if I spend all my time here, I've lost this. So I think deepening that management toolbox for teachers is important, and I think the common language and the common expectations across district will help. I don't really care if we call it tiers, if we call it this or that. I mean, you start in differentiation somewhere. And if we start with every kid gets met exactly where he is, while I see that certainly as an end goal, in its broad application, it could become a free-for-all. And so some of the guidelines to say, okay, we're going to start with, here's what you do within your classroom, here's what administrators will do here, and here's the team that we have for those other behaviors that we're going to kind of wrap around and see what we can do. The hard part is when you have multiple tier and tier two and tier three, if you want to call them that, behaviors where you need an administrator here and you need a team here, but you need eight teams that afternoon and you've only got one for the building. That's where it gets tough and being able to, again, deepen that toolbox so maybe some things can be dealt with and learn where the triggers are so that we don't get to red, we keep the kids at yellow and back up again before it gets to, we're off the wheels, wheels are off the track and off we go. And again, that's a work in progress. I don't think that we're there because I have people who are unwilling. I think we need some more training because they're up against some things that they haven't seen in quite this volume or this, this version before. And so that's going to be a big focus of what I'm looking at for next year. Because unless those pieces are in place, the culture and the academics are tough to focus. I mean, it's not to say that academics wait while we do this piece, but this piece needs to undergird what we're doing because if a kid's emotional, social, psychological needs aren't being met, I'm sorry, but that math algorithm really doesn't mean much. So.
I just have a comment to make. In regards to the fact that you guys are still in the establishment of these ideas, one thing I do want to reemphasize is consistency.
Absolutely.
And continuity. I think that that'll do nothing but good for just the student, just for where they know their expectations. Because again, they're smart and they will fluctuate to, well, this teacher lets me get away with that, you know?
teacher lets me get away with that, you know, and it's, it would be much better if they all had a baseline. The other thing that I would recommend too is bringing parents in earlier in the issue. I think that waiting until it becomes too much of an issue and then calling the parent can lead to, well, I haven't heard about this before, we've never been called, which makes them think that, well, my kid's been perfect up until this point. But if you get them involved earlier into the issue, perhaps on their end, they can also de-emphasize any issues that that child may be having at school and hopefully, you know, set up a support for the teacher so that if it does get down to the parents.
Or be able to give the teacher some insight that, hey, this is what's going on, and that you might be seeing some behaviors escalate because this part's derailed here, and I'm not surprised, but I will at least try to keep you apprised of what's happening.
Absolutely.
And so it needs to be an open communication, and I encourage teachers to not only call when it's going wrong, but when it's going right. Because too, then you say, you know what, we've had this open dialogue, here's some things that have been going really well, and then if all of a sudden there's a behavior shift, say, hey, you know, things didn't go well today, is there something I need to know about? And it's much easier to have that conversation when a relationship is established than when it's, well, you don't know me, but we're going to know each other a lot better, you know.
Well, and sometimes it's nice for the parents to hear the language that we're using in school too, so then they start to use that same language, so it's consistent throughout the student's life. I think the word for tonight is probably going to be consistency. It really needs, it needs to start and just travel.
Yeah, I would second that and agree with that actually, and sort of advocate for a philosophy that's K-12, and the culture expectation is K-12.
We have a draft statement, but we're not, we haven't necessarily vetted that with staff yet, and I don't want to be preemptive in bringing it to you because it's important that they have that buy-in as well.
Good. On behalf of the board, though, thank the principals for coming out on a very nice summer evening. Would have probably been more fun to be outside somewhere. We're fine.
I'd like to know where we are with the move to the SAU, at the SAU.
Well, we are moving in 13 days, yes, something like, yeah. We have a countdown. The framing is in for the offices that need to be framed in. The electrician was in today to do rough ends. I believe Friday, we have initial inspections, is that correct? Is it Friday? Is it tomorrow? I don't remember. Larry, I'm looking at you. I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay. Okay, maybe not Friday. So at some point, I'm supposed to be hearing back from Dennis for a walkthrough. We are hoping to, we have paint done in two of the offices, the hallway is painted, the other offices are in process, I need to get a server moved, I think, some more rough in there. We should have some pieces that can be, start to be moved probably the end of next week into the existing offices, and then we're looking at the 27th, 28th, or 26th, 27th, I can't, I lose it. It's the Thursday, Friday of that last week of July, and then the Monday following that we're going to be trucking things over. And my goal is to be unpacking on the first and good to go on the second, so. And I believe our copiers. Well, so is this whole move, so, yeah. And I believe our copiers arrive on the first as well, so, yeah.
Good times.
Yeah, technology has done most of their move to Valley View, which means then we can start moving some of the pieces from the SAU office into the annex. We're moving pieces from here, from Henry Wilson into the annex. And so it's kind of figuring, okay, which piece do we need to pull first so that that can go, so that this can go where that was, and this can go here, and, yeah.
What was your other? Any old business?
I just wanted to know where we stood in regards to Chartwells.
We have been getting emails of records, of invoices, and things that we're combing over and looking over. I still need to have an inventory, a written inventory, it's by USDA regulations for Henry Wilson. We did a walkthrough with them at the end of June and expressed that we need to have all these things. So I've started to be receiving electronic files and examining invoices. We have not received the final bill for June yet, so.
And when does Cafe Services come in?
They're in, they're under review with the Bureau of Nutrition right now, but we have started to have some conversation about transition, and they're still firming up who their director will be. The director will be, our last conversation would, that it would be someone who had previous school district experience. Existing employees, whether they were Farmington, Cafe Services, or Chartwells, have been encouraged to apply to them directly, and I think that they've had quite a number of candidates come forward to them, so.
Good. Any other old business? Public participation. Okay, next meeting.
I'm, I would like to see if we could get together on Thursday night to meet director of curriculum candidates, if at all possible. I really don't want to push that into next week if we can help it. Friday night is a bad time to try to do that, and I do need time to at least let people know that yes, this would be a possibility. I'm looking to also make sure that I have the committee for earlier in that day, have part of yeses contingent on a board meeting because I'm hoping to be able to have people come in one day to do, a few folks are traveling, and so I don't want to have them come back and forth too many times if I can help that.
It's not a good day.
Not a good day, okay.
I can, I can do it.
So you do have the candidates lined up to be here on campus Thursday? I haven't told them, I've told them that I need to have them come back and that I'm trying to get that set up for this week, but I wanted to hear from you what day that was a possibility before I said, here's where you are, so.
Not at all, huh?
No, I can't, but if the four of you can, that's fine.
I can. What time?
I would say maybe, I don't know how early you want to do that.
What time do you?
I would say probably not before 5:30 as I'm trying to get afternoon things done, but.
So 5:30?
Want to do 5:30?
Sure, okay.
Here?
Yeah, let's do it here.
So it'll be a.
It should be a relatively short.
It'll be a non-public session.
Going to be a non-public session, but as far as our next public session, are we going to set one for the 24th? Do you think we need one?
I don't know if I will have AP candidates at that point or not. It would be good if we could, but I also have to get a few folks out on vacation and somehow get a, an SAU move coordinated as well, so I don't know if the 24th will work. Do we want to say August 1st?
What's the first Monday in August?
August 1st.
Oh, it is?
No, July 31st. Oh, July 31st, okay. And then August 7th. So you want to do July 31st?
How's that going to help you getting your move done?
Yeah, well, but, I mean, we're going to have to come up for air, we, you know, we'll take a break for a board meeting and then come back. Take my hair out of a ponytail, it'll be good.
Can I check in with somebody like by the end of next week? And if I am not ready, can I just let you know that?
Yeah, I mean, if we're looking at just for AP, and we may, at that point, also need to do a regular board meeting as well if we have other nominations.
Okay, I just don't.
I understand that, yep.
Let's set one for July 31st, that work for you, Stan?
I believe so.
Regular, regular meeting, July 31st, 6:30. If we have candidates that night, great. If we don't, we can work on trying to get a special meeting.
Yeah, and, yeah, she's not going to be available that day, but.
Well, she doesn't need to be. You don't need to be. If you're.
I can be available by the phone.
But if, you've already done your end of the process, and if Booth Allen's bringing the two forward, you know, we're going to know your recommendation anyway through Booth Allen.
And I can be available by phone if anyone needs to ask this question.
Sure, you can do that.
6:30?
But if we, if we think we need to move on it quicker, you know, at the risk of losing a candidate who may be looking elsewhere, just communicate that.
Absolutely.
And try to get the board together. We've done that before in the summer.
Absolutely, okay.
Try to get us together to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so our next public meeting, July 31st, right here at 6:30. Thank you to those of you who viewed in from home, thank you to those of you who came out. I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public. Say 91A, colon, 32, A, B, and C for resignations, nominations. So moved by Mrs. Moran, second by Ms. McElhenney, all those in favor of our role, aye? Aye, folks.
Thank you.